Doctor this Friday, that's why I'm taking her place today. And bear with me, I forgot my glasses, so it's kind of like if I'm squelching, that's what it is. That's made it worse. I'll listen to you. It's nine o'clock now, I want to welcome the other Commissioners Court. Roll call. Pete?
Here.
I'm here, thanks. Shelby?
Here.
I'm here.
Everybody's here. Alright, open in prayer. Please take care of all the military wherever they may be, return them back safely to their homes. Please help us make the best decisions for the county. Please take care of the judge's mama right now when she's struggling. Amen or worship.
Amen.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any citizens to be heard?
Margie Domenech?
All the citizens, there's a specific item you want to speak on, y'all can wait till that item or y'all can speak now. I mean, y'all can speak now, I'm just saying, give you an advantage of while we're doing that item, if y'all want to speak on that time, y'all can speak on that time. You gonna wait for item number 11?
Wayne Beesler?
Olive Fordel. 11? Yes.
Kathy Beesler?
Same here, same.
Wilma Terry?
Barrett?
Gilbert Marmine?
Here.
Wait.
Will you wait, sir? And Gerald Marmine?
Same.
We got a lot of 11s up here. So that's a possible one. Okay. Lorraine? You were, I got, I'm gonna skip six or seven, go to you, eight and nine.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight, I'm sorry, Lorraine Davis, provide update on Harms County jail progress. Want to do a review.
Kristen's my intern architect, so she's coming up here every week with me and working on the jail project, on the construction documents, so. She's my right-hand man. So, as you know, we started the jail project in October and it's a pier and beam construction project. So we started with the site work, clearing the site, getting all the demolition done. We have all the site utilities in and the contractor is is almost complete with the, with the piers. In January, we got some test re-sports back on some of the piers that they were not reaching the strength of concrete that they were supposed to make to reach. In my whole career, this is first time we've ever, ever had concrete not reach its strength to this degree. I mean, you may have one test that comes back, you know, just slightly under and the engineer makes a decision on what to do. But these tests were coming back, where we have 3,000 psi concrete in the neighborhood of 1,000 psi after first break. Your first break at seven days normally is at 70%. So, of course, the project team started talking about, okay, what do we do from here? Because we knew that there's always a chance that it could get up to break. But up to the 3,000 psi and the 14-day break, well, nobody wanted to wait until 14 days to start talking about implementing a plan on what camp will do. So it took, you know, the project team coming together, the contractor, the geotechnical engineer, the structural engineer, and civil engineer, and of course your architect, to discuss what are the options that we have here because they're bell piers. So it's not like you can just come and rip them out of the ground, they're 25 feet down into the ground. And it's not something that you just take out and say, we're gonna do a do-over on removing them. So we looked at, you know, number one is the quality of the project cannot be compromised. You had to end up with the equal foundation when we were finished. So anything that we went to do had to take into account that those piers could not be counted on at all. We weren't gonna try to use them in any capacity in a small way and say, okay, we're gonna give it the value that it has and try to work with them. So ultimately, what the team started working on is to get a plan in place so at that 14-day break, if they didn't, if they didn't look like they were gonna be up there, we could start implementing that plan because this was not just an easy, quick, you know, one or two-day turnaround. It was gonna take time to do whatever we were gonna do. And then at the 21-day break, we would be ready to go if again, we didn't have those breaks. Because you do seven, 14, and 21-day breaks to check on the strength of the concrete. The, we looked at different ideas, like I said, what are the different options that we have? And the only option that the structural engineer said, I can sign and seal and say that you're getting the exact equal foundation to what you had before, is if we go in and chip all those piers down to grade. So every pier, there were 65 piers, half of your piers did not meet strength. So one, everything that came from Alamo met strength, everything that did not come from Alamo did not meet strength.
Where did each that come from?
Watson was the mix out of Quera. So, so what the contractor started doing again, even before the, you know, the 14 and 21-day breaks, is chipping down those piers. Because if they somehow made it, we could always put them back if we needed to. But what we didn't want to do is lose any more time. So all of the, all of the 65 piers that did not meet strength were chipped down to grade. Because you have this pyramid foundation, so they had to be all the way down at the grade underneath the sub-level of the basement so that they would not impact your foundation in any way. And then what we had to do, and you have a new plan, the engineer had to put together a new plan for you for the new beam. So when you look at the structural plan, essentially, every one of the piers that is, has a dash, has the diagonal lines through it, was a pier that didn't meet strength. So for every pier that didn't meet strength, we had to go back and put in two more piers a set distance away from the existing piers. And because there's a certain three times the diameter of the bell, the piers gotta be away from each other, so they had to be strategically located so that each one was located properly. And then what happens is then we pour a transfer beam between those two piers, so you don't have two piers with a transfer beam. Then that transfer beam supports the beam that the original pier was gonna come up and support. So you have the exact same strength and stability of your structure, but of course, the contractor had to put in another 130 piers in order to accomplish that, as well as transfer beams.
Who absorbs that cost?
And the cost is gonna go to the concrete, well, to the contractor. Harms County, you have a contract with HMC. So the cost is gonna go to HMC. And I'm gonna explain to you when I do your project recap, how we're gonna track all the impact of that and how that works. Make sure. That's the next one, is we have a recovery schedule that we're reviewing. We're not ready to present that yet because we just literally started putting in all of the new piers. And we're looking at any area we can, you know, make up time. But I mean, there's an impact to the schedule, there's no way it can't be. The reason that they looked at using another mixed design from Watson is because Alamo couldn't keep up with the schedule. Because everybody here knows how difficult it is to get concrete placed and how little of concrete you get and what the longer ways are, et cetera. So those will be presenting to you also. So your recovery, or excuse me, your revised plan showing your pier and beams is the two sheets that I presented to you here. Like I said, for every bad pier, you have a, two new piers going in with a transfer beam. All of the beams on the exterior, the transfer beams are gonna be below the ground with another small column that comes up to the original beam. Because you have your retainer all the way around and your insulation and your waterproofing. And I told them, I don't want those beams punching through all of that and trying to figure out how are we gonna deal with all those transitions. So we came up with a detail that would keep those beams under the ground. So they have an extra little polish between the beam under the ground and the beam that's actually, that those two new piers are supporting. So it is, it's simple but complicated. The hard part about it is because you have so many concentrated loads, it's not just a uniform load like a Walmart or something where all the load is uniform. You know, all of your pre-cast concrete and all of the different loads that we had in the jail, they may have literally had to run a separate calculation for every single pier and design every pier and every beam to deal with the concentrated load, you know, that transferred down for every piece of piers. Good news is, we're back on track and we've already poured, I believe we have eighth first day, and then we had another aid in on Thursday of last week. And the contractor's working with some, you know, on some different ideas also to get, you know, to accelerate the schedule. Because the schedule is critical. All the underground plumbing is in place already, so we're ready to go as soon as we get the piers in. We, if you'll notice, there's some clouds on here because what we did is, as the engineer calculated where each of these piers had to be, we then went out in the field and documented where all the plumbing and the ground electrical was that was already in place. And then we spot dug, if it was close, we spot dug and located anything. And there were actually five piers that we were able to shift a foot north or south in order to miss the plumbing and electrical. And if there was one, I think there was one pier that we may have to move some electrical, but, you know, contractors will be taking care of that. So are there any questions on on this pier challenge that we recently got?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's yours.
Very skillfully, a basic question, who's the parent of the cost of the additional piers and beams?
The contractor.
The contractor.
None of them count?
Nothing. Oh, sorry. Yeah, the contractor. Now, where it goes to the subs is what we, that's between the contractor and the subs. You know, I can't tell you if it's, who bears it down there. But the contract, your contract with HMC is going to be, is not really increased for the cost of the piers. And it will be reduced in the amount of any extra testing or any extra structural fees that we have. And I have a chart here that is gonna show the county how we're gonna track that. So you feel comfortable that that is the way it's gonna be.
There's no cost to it?
There is no cost to this county in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, who's gonna be, should be, because of the mistake on the piers and beams. 10, 15, 20 years down the road, that building starts to come apart and crack separate. Who's gonna be accountable for that?
The structural engineers. That's why the structural engineer that redid the plans and signed and sealed them. That's why he said, we're not gonna count on those existing piers at all. We're putting it, you know, we're putting it back in, just like those piers were never there, but you have twice. He would not be your geotechnical engineer and your structural engineer and, you know, as well as the contractor. But your professionals are the ones that are redesigning to take care of the problem. And we are responsible, just like we were at the very beginning. If the building cracked up or we had any problems later on, it's your same professional team. That's why all of the, any of the costs associated, your professionals work for Harms County, they help through the contractors. So you pay for your architect and engineers, and that's why you pay for also the testing laboratory. Those, those costs that the engineer, DSA is not charging you for their extra time on this because we're, we're just wanna get this done. We wanna work together and get it finished. The engineer who had to actually run all the new calculations, he had to spend a tremendous amount of time on it, and he hasn't been. And I'll go through and talk about and show you the chart we've created, that there's going to be professional fees related to this, which is the structural engineer was $5,100. And then all of the retesting that has to be done, you paid to test all the original piers already. All of the retesting for the 130 new piers is gonna be paid by the contractor. So what we're doing is, I told the testing company, set up a separate project for retesting piers. So it's not even mixed with your jail project. So it's gonna be built on a whole separate project in our system. So I don't have to go through each invoice and say, well, this one goes here, this one goes here. So we have a separate project set up for that, and we're gonna track that on. I have a separate chart called my pier chart, pier cost chart. Now, as these fees are incurred, the county's gonna pay for them because you want your, you're paying for your professionals. There can't be any compromise in integrity as who's, who are we responsible to? The contractor's not gonna pay for your professional fees. But as soon as those are paid, then we're gonna do a change order to HMC's contract that reduces their construction cost by the amount of that professional fee that's paid. And that's gonna happen concurrently. So the first invoice we have in is the $5,142 for REM. That's gonna go in, in March. And we'll have a change order to the construction contract that's gonna reduce the construction contract by $5,100. So that's how we're gonna make sure we track it. Your construction contractor's gonna, contract's gonna go down. We're gonna keep it on the chart here, and it's gonna just go as it is. You're gonna have a lot of change orders technically because, you know, we're gonna get billed, you know, for the next couple of months on the testing. But there's just the one fee for the, for the engineer. Then as far as all the cost, your contractor, HMC, and their subcontractors, you know, they don't, you only get a bill from HMC. And they're not billing anything additional for the cost of the construction.
Can you provide a copy of this to the sheriff?
Yes.
Copy of this connect?
Yes, I am, I'm gonna be actually meeting with them at 1:30. So we'll, we'll always make sure they get copied on the field reports and then we'll make sure they have a copy of this, the map and where was this chart.
These piers are supposed to be 3,000, 3,500, 4,000 PSI, is what this is?
3,000 PSI.
3,000 PSI. And they fell that 65 of them fell down?
Yes, sir.
Like here, there's a transfer beam plan? This one is gonna support the 3,000 PSI on its own, has nothing to do with the existing ones that's under the ground, they checked out, right?
Correct, yeah, you have two more, two more 3,000 PSI.
That's what I, see, I was gonna ask for some extra drawings, because there's not a drawing exactly.
This is the one with the bell.
Break it off.
These piers on side, put this beam up here above it, spacing between it and maybe.
But each one of these are gonna have bells on them?
Yes, sir, yeah. It's your exact same pier, it's the same pier that you put in. Some of them throughout the project, you had 18 inches, 24 inches diameter piers. So most of these are just 18 inches because you've got two piers doing the job of one. So, but it's the same depth, the same bell, the same steel, same everything. It's just like you have 130 extra piers and 65 abandoned piers.
I'm glad that's all the different drawing of that.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what we went back and forth and sketched back and forth, our little napkin drawings. And then, yeah, because these are strictly, the transfer beams are scheduled and then all of these details are on a different sheet that have the same. Are there any other questions on the pier and beam? So then.
Add, you ready on item number nine?
No, well, first I was gonna go through the construction recap, real quick for you. So essentially, you know, I have a recap chart here, and then each of these numbers that is tracked on the front is tracked by individual pages, you know, behind. And it's the same format that I presented in the past. The, we have our total construction contract, which is the 9.824 million. The actual amount that they've drawn to date is the 1.758 million. Their replacement pier cost is gonna be my little A over there, and it's a negative 5,100 because because the construction contract's gonna be reduced by that amount. Once we have that change order in place, I'll have another line under there that will have the new construction cost amount underneath it. And that will change for a little while until we're done with the, with the pier issue, so it'll go down. And then we have our site demolition prior to bidding, which has already been completed. The environmental cleanup to date, we have 213,000 in the budget, 82,000 is to date. The survey was in a previous budget. The AP fee is the 741 budget and the 587 to date. The additional insurance for the contract, we have our budget at 12,000, we spent to date 4,500. Reimburseable expenses, we have 51,000 in the contract, we spent 16,000, plus or minus, I'm rounding them. Civil engineering, 30,000 in the contract, and we spent 26,400. The jail expenses in the previous year's budget, but still count towards your overall jail cost is 15,000 in geotechnics survey, and that's all that's left. FFNE budget is in our construction cost up in A. And we have a project contingency of 115,000 that's separate from our construction contingency that's in A. I don't have land or relocation costs in here, geotech has paid previously. Bonds insurance and financial advisor of 100,000, and I don't track that, so I'm just keeping that in the budget and I'm not tracking where your cost is, it doesn't go through me. Construction materials testing, we have a $55,000 budget, we spent 13,000 to date. And then we've been working back and forth with the county and on the tower. And if we go to a taller tower than was originally in the budget up in A, I have a budget of 126,000 for a tower. But it looks like the, it looks like the sheriff department is going to need a 300-foot tower, and we're still, we're working on that. But Commissioner Yauer said that he had put in this budget, in this year's budget, 225,000 in case we go over that 126. So I just have that down there as a separate chart to track. If it's, you know, if it gets approved and it's needed, I have a way to track it. That'll just go, you know, through court once it's all decided.
Is that tower a freestanding tower?
Yes, sir.
And if for some reason it would fall?
There's, there's different things that the, that the tower company does, and I'm working with the, with the designers on getting some type of a letter to talk to you about how all of that works. There's, if there's a high concern about, you know, what happens if it falls, one of the things that they can do, I don't know all the technicalities of it yet, because we're just talking to them. But they can design like the first 100 feet to not collapse, and then the rest of it would collapse over or on it. And how much it tips over, I don't know. So we're working on a fall line for you.
Yeah, that's right.
And exactly how all that works. I mean, I know that it's designed for code and it's a higher, it's a public safety code. So you have a higher, you know, all the engineers put a safety factor in there, they calculate what'll work times whatever the factor is. And this is one of the highest safety factors that they require, you know, in the code. So we are working on that, and once we, once I know what's happening and all the details have been worked out, we'll be coming back to present to the court. This is what the sheriff's department needs, and this is, you know, they'll present to you why, of course, and then I'll just present how we're gonna make it work with the department. So we're looking at different alternate locations because your jail site was very, very tight. And the one, the one spot that I had for it was right next to the jail. It can't get bigger than a 20-foot by 20-foot footprint. That's as big as we can get, and thick, it was right back by that retaining wall, and we had to get fire department access through it, I mean, I didn't almost have an inch to spare, it was like tight. So when they said they're going to 30 feet, I said, red flag, it's not gonna fit. So we have to start talking about where else are we gonna put it, and how do we plan for that? We've gotten to the point that if we go to 300 feet, they're gonna do a wireless technology back to your jail. So we'll just have a little antenna on your radio equipment above that, so I don't have to worry about those conduits between there. So that helps us because we can just move on in construction and say, okay, wherever it goes, I'm gonna have some roof jacks and my radio equipment room. So we can have the antennas and get the cables down, I don't have to worry about that conduit connection. Because that was, we're at that point now, and that was, that had to be decided. So that's a work in progress right now, and I'm meeting with the sheriff's department at 1:30 to talk about the tower, you know, the tower location, as well as some other.
And the tower that's originally gonna put there with the footprint that Joe had there was what, 200?
100, yeah, it was 198 feet. Yes, sir.
Mr. Arty, you have a question?
And you're well aware, this is an election year. We haven't been asked by a lot of the district to supply against the cost of jail for a broken ground, we're sending a $7.5 million, $5.5 million. First being official settlement, we took and taken before the public had bought. The other $4.5 million was not, there was never an explanation. Or a question asked as to why the additional cost of $4.5 million. When I did inquire, I was informed that the cost of precast was gone. I called a friend of mine who's a civil engineer, who just happened to be a precast business. He told me the cost of precast is not a prison precaution. He said, the only thing it could be is that the architect, the architecture of the building has changed. If it has changed, I'm asking what had been done and what was not, what was the commission court and the public prior to the award of the $4.5 million.
That's a, that's a long, I, I would have to go to, if we wanna address that, I would have to go back to all the times that I came before Commissioners Court. And we talked about the construction cost, and we talked about where we were and why we were there. And ultimately, when the project bids came in, we presented to the court, this is where the project cost is, this is where we are. We looked at value engineering ideas, we talked about different ideas to save money, and what the value was. You know, precast is a cost that when we talked to the county and we talked to the sheriff's department and we looked at, you can do masonry walls in the cells. A lot of jails have masonry walls. Masonry walls cost less, it's not necessarily precast. Everything's gone up, and in Harms County, unfortunately, the cost of construction down here gets higher for everything. The, and you can see that in your bids, the spread in your bids when we did this project was a very, very small spread. Everything was tight, and we're very close together. The different ideas that we tagged to save money is, one, if you gave up precast, you could have saved some money. But the drawback there is, when you have inmates in a cell, even with high-strength ground, 5,000 PSI, they're gonna pick through those blocks. It's a constant maintenance item. Precast, you don't have that maintenance item. There's pros and cons, exterior, you could do metal wall panels that eventually are gonna chalk and fade or are not stable. These are gonna be precast walls that have your exposed sealed, it's not painted, it's a maintenance free structure. We looked at all the pros and cons, we came up with different ideas on value engineering and reviewed them. And it was decided to stay with the original value that the project was getting. And the court did vote at that time to accept that construction contract and continue forward. The, the cost went from, up to 9.8 million was the, you know, the load accepted off of from Hill Mills Construction Agency.
The question still is, are there any major architectural changes?
No, sir. No, sir, no. They went, and we can show you from schematic designs all the way through the size of the facility, the features of the facility stayed consistent. As well as the building concept, which was like the precast, some of the different decisions were looking. And I can show that, if anybody's interested, you know, I can present that and show that.
May I give you a brief answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. During the bidding, we tried to design it for a 15-year deal. So we had to sign a good construction, we couldn't keep construction. We could've taken out 8 feet of dirt and called in 8 feet of dirt. But the difference, that's about 250,000. We chose to go to pier and beam because the settlement on a field job would be one inch. You could expect one inch settlement, there'd be no, you couldn't say that's a contract's fault, it's gonna settle on. But we went to pier and beam, and they said it would be 400 something to settle. 50 years, we thought it was 250,000 dollars was a reasonable amount of spend on that jail. And not to cut the cost and keep it at a 15-inch. That's just the example.
Here's the point, Pete. Public is the one that brought the $7 million bottom. The commission court took it upon themselves to approve that $4.5 million, and it never went to the public about it. And number two, we went from $7 million before we broke ground, now to $9.5 million, but to $11 million plus. And that's not including any cost over the board to clean up.
We started at 7 million in April 2011 about the cost of the jail. About 7 million, that's, that's, before we got it designed, we had to take architects above that 7 million for the jail cost. The design team had an oversight. So anyway, the cost went up, and we knew that it would be about $8.5 million. When we got into it in the design, and before we got the bidding paid, we were sure it would be $8.5 million. But the commission court decided that not to go ahead, we wouldn't have that much money to hand in addition to the settlement. And as David said, when the bids came in, they were within about 4% of all four bids, but they were over.
Well, I would just like to tell you that this commission court had not done a good job in the past, this building could resuscitate right now as a perfect example. We're at $11.5 million before we broke ground. And I would like to know if you're gonna be able to beat that $11 million, $11.5 million, or if we're gonna have another 5% cost over that, that is the cost of $20 million.
We were on the floor.
As a matter of fact, the commission court had not done a good job in the past, I'm not talking about you guys, I'm talking about the commission's court.
Thank you. I was here for that.
You were here that last time, and we were absolutely guaranteed that there was no pass $3.5 million. Guaranteed, we told him that he was wrong. Told him to run at 6.5 million, and we were within just a few hundred thousand dollars. All I'm saying is, the commission court has not kept a good type rate on spending the money, we're already $4.5 million over what was approved by the public for this county.
All right. On your page, there's got the, is that recap, I guess? Not a number on here, but it's.
It's on the top right, there's like a C.
Well, I got a staple over.
Go to the top right.
Yeah, but right here.
Oh, this one?
Assistance and assessment.
Yes, that's your, all the environmental, which that's, I mean, there are a lot, this project was very complicated. I mean, a couple hundred thousand dollars is in environmental assessments, which wasn't in here originally because we didn't necessarily go. So there are some things that were in them. As far as guarantee, I mean, I, nobody can hear. As far as guarantee, I mean, I, nobody can guarantee anything, however, you have a very, very good set of plans. You really should have no more unknowns because the unknowns are under the ground. We finished with our underground utilities. The shop drawings were, were almost finished going through shop drawings, so as far as catching mistakes or errors or conflicts, I mean, David is, is the contractor, can probably speak more to this, but I see, when we are done with this, I see us staying at this number. And if you look at the charts that I've been doing, they haven't changed other than the original, it went up, you know, the construction cost and then we've added this additional tower fund that came in, you know, into play, which is outside of our scope. We just leave the space for the tower wherever it needs to be. So can I guarantee you anything? No, because I can't guarantee tomorrow, but you have a good set of plans and unknowns.
I'm not asking for a guarantee, what I am asking from the commission court. Monitor this project and all other projects very closely so we don't end up in the same bind as we are with this building right here.
Pete, uh, we've been, we've talked, on one meeting, I think, we came back and talked about a triangle and a piece of land or say you want to swap or, you know, that, whoops and steps.
If they've not been swapped.
We're going to be, we're going to wait until they're all completely done.
Yes, sir. We, the recommendation is, we've designed it so that you can swap it if you want to. We've kept all, all the waters over here, let, because we don't want to affect the contract and the construction, et cetera. It's safer just, you do accept this project when it's finished and then y'all can swap and change and do what you want. Yes, sir. Philip?
No, we talked.
And then you got a question on system assessment, but, um, we have a not too seen amount of why it hasn't been built. I'll have to find out why they haven't built one yet. You know, when they, I don't track like the, the sub, the consultants, if they don't send me a bill, um, you know, I don't, I didn't notice. I don't call and say, hey, why have you built? You know, if they build for more, that's why I have this chart, because then I say, wait a minute, when the 750 was approved, you know, what's going on?
Oh, I saw that, right.
Yeah, I agree. I, I really didn't notice it. Okay, so that is your, your chart and we will, you know, at the end of each month, we'll be, we'll be, you know, presenting these. We did it at the end of January because I was out of town, right? So, but we will continue on and Luana is getting a hard copy as well as an Excel file, so you have what you need. Make sure we match.
Ready to move on to?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to item number nine. Grant David to present project cost and budget recap before hump.
Okay, so now we have, we have three different charts because we have our phase one, which is really pretty much wrapped up. And then we have our phase one A, which was your foundation repairs. And then we have our phase one B, which is the new project that is currently at THC. So just essentially, nothing changed on our phase one since the last time that I presented this. I did modify the chart a little bit just so that you can see your, when we did the change order to, to MJ Boyle's contract to go ahead and let them do all the abatement at one time and, and save that, you know, the tremendous cost of coming back and forth, back and forth, doing little pieces. And the court decided to go ahead and approve that change order. In the end, when you track everything, the county funds spent from the bond money according to our chart for phase one in addition to matching funds, which I think is the number that you're interested in to make sure that you know to track those monies that you have, ended up being 155,812. So again, nothing's really changed since, you know, early, middle of last year, but we're still tracking that to make sure you know how much of your, your bond money that you've spent. There's two items that Graham Loon, he still has a fee remaining of 2,000 that he hasn't built for. And then Fisher Peck has not, there's, there's a final report that they have to submit to the THC and he said that wasn't included in his original fee. So we're just, we're still waiting for that and there's going to be some expense for that and I don't know how much, but it's, it should be minimal. So then if you go onto phase one A, that project is, is almost complete, that's your, your foundation repairs. And the last view report that I did for you, I, I gave you a kind of like a highlighted colored chart of the survey. What happens is when the, once all the ground injection was done and the, for the building stabilization, the specs called for that building to be surveyed every single month for a year. So we started tracking what the, you know, settlement was because of course now that we injected it, we expected it to move a little and then settle down and not move anymore. So in the last report that I sent you, you'll be able to see that the movement is, has settled down. There was, was a lot less movement this last month than before. And then we're tracking the overall movement in different areas and most of your movement, the higher percentage ended up being in the southeast corner of the building. And then also we have those crack monitors where we're monitoring the, the cracks to see and those have stopped moving pretty much now too. So it looks like things are going good, but we're going to be getting a final report from the engineer on that. On that, we have a THC funds of 450,000. The, the budget was 1.9 million and then the actual amount that's been spent to date is 1.5 million. You still have your construction contingency. It started at 72,000. We were able to do some different things to save money and you're at 96,000 now in that contingency that's still sitting there and we're finishing the project this month. So I, most of that will be going back to the county. So at the very bottom box here, I have total budget, less the THC grant funds equals your anticipated county matching funds plus the bond money spent for phase one A. And it will be less any remaining contingency. So your, if your project ends up being 1.93 million, your out-of-pocket would be 1.48 and then we'll be subtracting your construction contingency that's remaining out of that and that will tell you how much of your, you know, bond funds that you've spent on phase one, or on the courthouse, excuse me, for one and one A. Now, phase one B is, is your roof. As you know, the THC only ended up with 4 million dollars this time to spend. So essentially, they said, we're going to give money away in 450,000 increments to different counties for what they're calling emergency projects. They received, you know, so Graham Loon and myself worked on, on putting together the, and then of course the THC and the county and, and all of your involvement worked on putting together the, the grant application for 450,000 to put towards your, towards finishing that roof. And what this will do is it'll finish the roof, it doesn't include that clock tower in the middle. That will just be a setup to be able to add in the future, add that clock tower because that's expensive and it's, we can waterproof it without the clock tower. We don't need that. The main thing is to get your roof finished and it's watertight. So now you have a foundation and you have a roof and then you get to start working in between on, in the future. So the, the report that we received is that the THC received 10 applications before ours. Ours was the 11th. They expect to get 39. I haven't gotten an update on how many they actually got. There's 4 million to give away. It's a max of 450,000 for each project. And on March 17th and 18th, the THC is going to be doing review and questions and April 17th and 18th is when they're expected to do the awards. Your, the chart that I prepared for you for one B is similar to the one A. The THC funds are 450,000. Your total budget that, that has been prepared for this project is, has an 85,000 dollar contingency, is 1,019,845. Now, we did work with MJ Boyle on this budget since he's already worked down here, he did your previous roof, he knows the construction cost, he just did it. So that's, that was accurate as we, as we feel like we can get because he's, he assisted a lot in that. You have your architects fee for bidding, you have your, your owner rep, myself, my fee for bidding. And then you'll have a separate fee for construction administration if the project goes forward. And then we just have some placeholders in there for construction materials testing and any additional environmental, which we shouldn't have it, but I have a placeholder for that. So bottom line, it looks like your, if you get 450,000 dollars, your project is going to be somewhere in the 1 million dollar range. So you'll, you'll need about another, what, 550, 600,000 to do the project if, if you decide to go forward with it and if you grant, if you get the grant.
Three dollars?
You get a million dollars for the number. Yeah, this later.
How much, how much the foundation cost?
Yes. The, the foundation total approved, I mean, this is inclusive of your fees and environmental and, you know, all of the contract, et cetera, is, the per budget is 1.93 million and of that, right now, we have 96,000 left in the contingency to give back to the county. Like I said, you should be getting most of that back because we're almost done.
David, we have break down your land?
The grant money was 450. So I show an out-of-pocket of 1.48 million minus the 96. So I think it'll be about a 1.4 out-of-pocket, please.
Is there any other question?
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it very, very much.
I don't disagree with it, but I think if you look at it on the surface, a million dollars to two, a million dollars to four. I mean, if there's, if there's construction required, I just want to know if it's not just a prison. I can add a reason for what we got to do to reinforce structure.
Number two, going back to item number six. Presentation introduction by Mr. Donnie Montemeyer, Texas A&amp;M. Agro, Agro Life Extension Service of the applicant to fill the county extension agent ag and natural resources position in Karnes County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing, sir? Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. Again, I'm Donnie Montemeyer, I'm the district extension administrator of Texas A&amp;M Agro Life Extension Service. And I want to provide all recommendation for your county extension agent for agricultural and natural resources and also the work for the county. We've had a day with search committee replaced and we've provided the opportunity to interview several individuals all over the state, wanting to come to Karnes County and we have selected Mr. Jerry Alwine. And Mr. Alwine, the kindly recommended at graduate of the college of state university and has a really good skill set that we believe will be your next county extension agent. I wanted to come today and see if you had any questions for him and the introduction to the court. I had considered it to a shot previously and as we, and basically just here to introduce it to you.
Questions for Jared?
Yes.
Do you have a question for him?
Tell us who you are, where you're from, please. Name, Jerry Alwine, from Innis, Texas, just south of Dallas. And I graduated from the state university in 2011, majored in agriculture extension and then working around this part of the country for hours because they have that company. And this is what I'm looking for, what I was wanting to do. Look forward to opportunities.
Jared, Jared comes with a, a skill set of working with livestock for age projects as well. This county is one of the many very important things that young people are very involved. I mean, Karnes County has a rich history and extension background, working with 40 new. And we're fortunate to have Jared come work with Megan Dennison, part of their CS agent that's been a great job for us here as well. And he would, he would start actually on Monday and what I would do is I'd send him to Wilson County. We have a good staff over there. We're going to send him to Wilson County for as much as a month, up to a month. The extension service will pick up, up his salary for the whole first month and then he actually starts in April, at the part that's closest to that here in Karnes County. And then that's when the Karnes County portion of the salary he actually starts.
What are your plans if you're living here?
Right now, no, right now, we, we currently live in San Antonio and we are looking closer to this part of the country. My wife is the CS agent of Wilson County, so we were already planning to get this way. At this point, I'll be responsible.
So you're thinking of moving to Karnes County, Wilson County?
Uh, yes, sir. Probably closer to Karnes County.
We've already discussed that and it's important for the community to invest in community. Invest in Fox County and we discussed that and we agreed to, to provide a great effort to be able to get as close as to the county as possible.
That's great. And that was Jared?
Yes, sir. J-A-R-E-D.
Jared, can you bring a ring?
Bring a ring.
We're working on it. Thank you all very much. Also, I want to take this opportunity to thank you all for your support. If you can do our job, we got the support of the county and all the infrastructure that you all provide us and we have a pretty good program here in this county and it means because of all of your support. Thank you all very much and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Alwine. Thank you, Jared. Moving to item number seven. Acknowledgement on record of the San Antonio food bank distribution, March 3, 2014, at 10:30 AM at the Kennedy City Park. It's going to be at the Kennedy City Park on March 3, 2014, at 10:30 AM. Is it Monday? Sure, it's Monday, but I know it's going to be at the Kennedy City Park, I mean, it's the Kennedy City Park. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. Moving to item number 10. Acknowledgement on record of the Texas Association of Counties' coverage change for existing public official liability coverage, which affects all members renewing on or after November 1, 2013. Martha was Judge Shaw, but she's not here. Any questions, guys?
Can we give you a brief overview of the changes if you so desire? I can read you a brief overview of the amendments to the policy. Your county attorney, assistant county attorneys and assistant district attorneys are now covered against a claim of malicious prosecution, including the elements of dishonesty, bad faith, dues and furtherance of or supervision of law enforcement pursuits or activities and malicious or criminal acts or omissions. As a pool member, we are now automatically covered against a claim for back wages up to $25,000 per claim and $25,000 in the aggregate. As a pool member, we are now automatically covered against a claim for punitive or exemplary damages up to $1 million. The pool will now provide a defense for a claim based on allegations of statutory or constitutional takings up to $50,000 per claim and $50,000 in the aggregate. The pool will now provide a defense for a claim based on allegations of criminal or malicious acts or omissions not to exceed $50,000 per claim and $100,000 in the aggregate. The county's employees, volunteers and officials who work at a hospital or airport owned and operated by you are now automatically included in your coverage. We do not have that. And also, the county's district and county clerks and deputy district and county clerks are now automatically covered for claims based on their errors and omissions up to the lesser of the statutory liability or $1 million.
Any questions, guys? Moving along to item number 11. Acknowledgement on record of notice of receipt from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality of an Application and Declaration of Administrator's Completeness, completeness for reference beneficial use site registration located in Karnes County. Yeah, that's...
Did anybody explain that?
Maybe I didn't read it good. Acknowledgement on record of notice of receipt, receipt from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality of an Application and Declaration of Administrator's Completeness for reference beneficial use site registration located in Karnes County. I need a definition. Call Judge Shaw. Yeah. Yeah, you can go ahead and speak.
All right, let me, it's yours. I'll lead off, I, I can give you some pen and paper. Basically, yeah, sorry. Twenty decent weeks. And thanks for... And thanks for offering to talk to you guys today. I'm a student of background, I'm a former, a retro professional civil engineer, worked for Harris County for 13, 15 years, and done a few reviews of developments and different types of development projects. One, what this is, is a, when I say beneficial use site, it's beneficial, it's a site that's defined as a, it's an application for a domestic waste disposal site. Before the.
Why did we say that?
Well, it's a long.
I'm saying, I'm saying, what I'm getting to is.
That's why I want to put that on the agenda so everybody understands it like that. I'm not saying you. I'm saying why doesn't Judge Shaw put it on the agenda so everybody understands what's being talked about?
It's not very understood by anyone.
Right. Do you allow me, I think, to explain that? It's not real clear the way the law is worded, the state law is worded, how to actually say that. I mean, they did a pretty good job of putting it on the agenda, just the disposal waste part of it, and they tried to keep it out of it. Long and short of it, what this is, it's a, when I say beneficial use site, the whole goal is to allow septic sludge, domestic waste, that sort of thing to be applied to in a way that it would be beneficial to the property, helping agricultural needs and that sort of thing. It's trying to apply the agricultural rates. The reason all these people up here won't talk about it, it's a good group of them anyway, is that the applicant that put it in actually defined nothing about what the property, take, evaluated, nothing. In fact, there's a section of the application that's in your package that's completely blank in terms of calculating the rate of applications that should be required to keep pollutants within acceptable levels. There's actually no analysis of what the potential waste would be. It's a very poorly contrived application. They didn't fill out a lot of stuff. Addition to that, the sites to be proposed in the hundred-foot lane of the San Antonio River. The fact is, I personally, my five or four eighty years of seeing the floods, once in Ula, once in Lake Nantucket, to the point where it catapults in and wastes deep water, and we had to go to get to our house and poke, and the backwater was as well. So this water backed up and go ahead, and just kind of sat there. So it was pretty bad because it was distributed this type of stuff all to several places. Additionally, in this application, the application requires that you know where all the water and oil wells are. None of that is discussed. Three of those wells are on the property if you're wanting to dispose this water. One of them is being used to take off, take off work, commercial purposes right now, just like a lot of places in America. So this is a very bad idea for our, our county. Specifically, I mean, we live right near the store in this place, and it's, in fact, there's a lot of these people that have been on this property, that grew up on the property. So it's a good idea for them. I won't take a lot of your time because I can give you technical details. I've thoroughly evaluated the law and the state. My hope is that they admit you've got this application available to you because if you see you complete their administrative, according to what the letter we got, they're conducting a technical evaluation of it, much more like what I've already done. I'll be forwarding a copy of my technical evaluation along with my comments about this. Couple more details about the application. Don't pay too much attention to the maps. They're in the application because they don't show the site. They don't represent anything. The soil samples in a situation like this should be cross-referenced to the site. The soil map that was provided from USGS is about less to the north, northeast, about two and a half miles. The site is actually about less than two tenths of a mile off of the record. So additionally, they provided a highway map, site name shown on it. Don't try to find it. You won't be able to find it. Topographic map, you know, the site's not on it. The only thing that was accurate was that there was a map that was in there that showed the property correctly located in the floodplain, the hundred-foot lane. So what I'm, I guess, some of what I was going to want to talk to you guys about was, to me, based on my experiences professionally, I've looked at a lot of design plans. The areas of omissions in this map show absolutely no care consideration for environment or people. If they're not willing to just put the time in to put in a good application, how can you trust them with the environmental, environments, the environment system?
I'm sorry, but your time's up. I did have extra time since our.
No problem. Thank you. I'm just about done. Yeah, I learned we give it a second. Long and short of it, yeah, long and short of it is, it's a really bad idea. It doesn't have a lot of technical merit. The potential for environmental situations is high. We're going to have the San Antonio River forty folks come out and take a look at the site today. They, and they're also, I think they're, they've asked somebody from the floodplain to, to. Okay, great, yeah. That's what I asked. Jack Rabbit Services LLC. It's a limited liability company that is a subsidiary of.
Air.
Someplace else.
Houshna, Harden.
Harden, yes, Harden. And they, the Harden transports everything but, for that, most of the companies Harden transports everything but the garbage and waste and stuff that's created. If you go back and see how it's created, it's created, it was what's, what was. Anyway. Thank you all.
That was my question. Did the applicant love that?
Okay.
Do they buy that land or?
No. No, they, they have done an agreement with the owner.
Kathy Geesler of the Backstreet. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kathy Geesler, and I am on the home and land at the end of County Road 104 for the past thirty years. I'm hearing a voice concerning for my San Antonio brothers of the public waste disposal disposal site next to my place at the same address. Since I get excited about some things and start to screech when talking to you because I'm seventy years old and sometimes I hear what I want to say, I'm just made a list of my concerns. All are equally afforded to me, to me, despite the order in which they are listed. Number one is how will the river affect you? I live in the San Antonio River floodplain, and the river is less than a half mile from me. I've been in two major floods and several minor rises since being there. It's dry now, but it will rain and flood again, and how will this waste disposal affect you? I'm concerned about the effect the waste disposal will have on my two water wells. How will this affect me, my livestock, and the water? Will I be able to continue to drink my water if this happens? How will the waste disposal affect my food supply? I raise two gardens a year, and we hunt there in the fall. Will I still be able to eat what I grow and what I hunt? How will the waste disposal affect my ag exemption? What if my cattle get sick and can't stay healthy? Then I'll have to sell them and lose the ag exemption on my land, which will make it part of the inventory in my package. How will this disposal affect the land values in the future and in the future water wells, which must be drilled? What will be the impact on my road? It is dry and rough out there at present, but when it rains, it becomes almost impossible to use. Who will repair the damage caused by the nature of the structure? These are my concerns, and I'm asking this court to support us and ask the T C Q to consider not approving this application for this waste disposal.
Thank you. Wilma Berry?
My name is Wilma Berry, and I am a brother and sister, anyway, family-owned property next to this site that is being proposed.
You also live on County Road 104?
No, sir. I live in Victoria, 343 Donaway Street.
Oh, but you own property there?
My family does, yes. And I'm just wanting to interject that the floodplain does exist. It was completely underwater in 1967, and again, in 1998. That's my main concern, and I'm sure the rest of these are going to give you more information.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Gilbert Parkman?
Well, Commissioner, well, I know what you go through each and every time you come to me. I've been a commissioner of the county for twenty-four years, and anybody who wants to be a county commissioner has to be damn good. Anyway, I grew up in this area twenty years of my life, and I've been on that property. I used to farm that property for one year, and I know that it consisted, right now, in Deering County, we're trying to fight a dump site of over seven hundred acres in our area right around Harrah. And they're going to put all the oil field waste and stuff there, try to recycle it, do all kinds of things with it. But it's all come and go, and as far as sewage sites and everything like that, I don't know if I'm going to put all that in that same area. It's always going to be a mess and it's going to tear up a lot of roads. And I think the roads going down to that property is about going to pull up to two dollars because the guy from Commissioner Ford, he can get to the parrot in most of the time. And there's one ridge in that area there that they, that helps the floods not go big get there anyway. And it rains, hopefully, it'll have rain come again. And I know personally that the water, the hundred-foot floodplain is flooded, I guess, well, it's too big now, but I've set up three other cages. And if we have to get out of our property, if we go to town, it stays flooded, and the water stays there pretty good. So I don't know if there's anything else I can say, but again, Commissioner.
I'll let you go, too.
And I'll plug.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Gerald Parkman?
I'm Gerald Parkman. I do own the land, orders, particular property. First of all, let me give you a better overview of what is happening. After it had the floodplain that you described in that particular area. I have a lot of concerns, but let me just, before I get on this map here, I'm going to address this with the T E C Q. Send them a microphone. But I'm going to briefly announce here, on the map, you'll see a red dot over on the right-hand side. That's where the coordinates for the original site that T E C Q sent me. But when you come down to the address of the actual site, it goes back to the green one. It's on to the left there. So you're talking about maybe four, five miles, that's profile. My concern is if you place a disposal site in that floodplain, how's it going to affect the wildlife, residents, users who live close to it, and further on downstream? You can see the river will curve, and the actual site of where the dump site is is very short. I don't know, maybe even half a mile, actually probably shorter than that. And this dump site, if you have a landfill or a dump site that usually has some kind of storm protection involved in it, but in this particular case, you're in a floodplain. It is not a question of if it floods, basically, it's when it floods. And you ever watched hurricanes? We do have a big hurricane in this part of the coast. And another thing I'm concerned with is the pathogens, the treatment that comes from the dump site, where's it going to go? It'll go back into the river. All right, and another statement, I'm going to make it short and sweet here. Basically, what is on that land is actually a part of the San Antonio River when it floods. There's no way to stop it. It'll come right back into the river and backwash some part of the river.
Initial time?
Not sure. It's a couple months, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Margie Dominguez?
My name is Margie Dominguez, and I'm part of that clan over there, and I have two sides in Selma, Texas. But I grew up on the farm around me, and I do own the property right across the road from this site. I came today to voice my objection to the application for disposal of domestic septic on property located at 5261 County Road 104. This waste will be dumped next to my property across the road and others who permanently reside next to the alleged site. My concerns are, one, the map sites in the application are conflicting, as you've heard. One attachment shows it's located in the FEMA SARA, San Antonio River Authority floodplain. According to the map I retrieved from the River Authority website, it shows the area in question is approximately a half a mile from the San Antonio River. The application implies that it's within the legal distance of the river and not to harm anything when it floods again. But in my lifetime, again, it's flooded at least two times that I remember. And so how can anyone in all consciousness believe that this will not harm the environment? The water will become contaminated downstream, and there are two water wells and a gas well located on my, my brother's property across the road, which are not marked on the attachments in this floodplain. So there are restrictions involving this, but they're not on there. And then also, I'm concerned about the wildlife and the livestock that are, will be eating the vegetation because they will become infected. The T C E Q requirements, Title 30 Rule 31282, states that animals must not be allowed to graze on the land for at least thirty days after application of sewage. And they are planning to do this every two days, dumping sewage there, according to that application. So that kind of concerns me because I have cattle running there, and I know that the users also do, not on that property, but close by when it floods or it will. That really is a big concern for us. The value of my land will also be decreased, and I'm also concerned about the air quality that will be going on. The application states that lime will be applied atop the sewage. Who will be responsible overseeing to this regulation? And the landowners are responsible for overseeing this because they don't live in the county. So there are a lot of things that have been stated that are our concerns as to what's going to happen, how it's going to be regulated. And the main important thing is the things that we've been reading that come from those disposal sites, supposedly from the rigs, is mainly human waste and other things. So. So thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Geezer, this stuff has not been treated, as we understand?
Yes, sir, that's right. They're going to be picking it up according to the application from the rig locations correctly and bringing it out there. And they actually call it domestic waste. It's actually not really a product, it's covered by the particulars part of the law that they're applying, and what they call, what's called domestic septic is. So domestic waste, there's no telling what's in there, and they haven't evaluated that or been clear about that.
They just load it up and take it down?
Yes, sir.
And fly it to the ground?
Yes, what they proposed in their application is to use a tank truck with a spreader. And you can imagine a tank truck with a lawn going out. How are you going to cover one hundred twenty-five acres, which is the area of the property they filed about with one road in it now, when it gets wet? I mean, there's a lot of holes in there. Take a tank truck with a lawn and start spraying this stuff. If I'm the truck driver, I'm going to stay on the road, especially.
James, on that, I have a letter, and it says they have thirty days to write my complaint to the T C Q on it before they decide what they're going to do, before it gets approved. So they have to ask for, depending on the complaints.
And I think most of us intend to do that as well. We're going to send a letter. And I'll see this court with mine and as well as a few other folks. Any other questions?
My question, the question that was asked by one of the individuals is, will the commissioner support their opposition to this replacement disposal site?
Yes, sir.
I think they should. Yes, sir.
May I ask you, well, this is the person that, it was fifty-two sixteen County Road 114?
Fifty-two sixteen Y sixty-one.
Are they a resident?
No, they live in Boney and County, and B County, I think, right?
That's right.
They don't live in the county?
No. It's their land, they're in territory. And may I ask a question also? The county judge is supposed to also approve this according to this letter. I know.
What's on here? On item number whatever, the man is only acknowledging on record notice of receipt.
So you all go ahead.
Did you have to put anything on there for approval or anything like that? It was just a notice.
Okay.
We'd have to come back and put it back on there for approval or something like that.
Should the court choose to support or?
Yes, it would have to be put on another agenda item written out, you know, proof is approved. But right now, all it has is the notice.
And I think that's what a bunch of us are. If the court feels moved to support us in this group that's focused, foreoffice is willing to object to it, we appreciate the support.
I didn't want syrup being dumped. If that's the case, you might as well do a get-o-and-do with all cities' earths. Load it up and take it out.
Can I make a statement? The lady said in the letter that I got it, she said, "We had thirty days to respond to that." But I didn't get, and I looked at the date, and I did the proposal to start with. It was in October of last year. And I did not get my, I don't know if it was thirty days from the day the letter was sent out or from the day that I received it.
It's thirty days from yesterday.
Okay, well, then, because I didn't get it until sometime here in February.
Well, I've got the application, I just now got it. It says it's one hundred twenty-five acres. T C Q has made of a copy application for registration with this notice of Corners County Judge's viewing by interested parties. For further information concerning this application, we contact the authorized person act for the applicant, Mr. Lamar Fontanat, nine three six three four six seven eight five one. Interested parties have thirty days from the date this notice is issued to receive the application provided written comments to Bridget C. Bohack, Chief Burge, post office box thirteen zero eight seven Austin, seven eight seven one one. Regarding proposed land application site, at the end of this notice period, all written comments reported to the sludge team for review and consideration. And I guess the date on this thing would be February thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. If they're.
It's postmarked, it's postmarked on the envelope.
So they got till March thirteenth?
Of course, thirteen, that's correct.
And the man, Lamar Fontanat, he is the president of Jack Rabbit Services.
Or text.
It's hard, it's hard.
Right. It's too big to be acted on.
So. The obvious reason we had concern, one hundred twenty-five acres, pretty big size, it's land, and it's a flood plain. Pretty much like a cornsors, or that area.
Yeah, we have concerns.
We have concerns. I know that the septic or sludge, it has to go through the primary process. I'm not quite sure what that means. For example, what I think is the primary treatment process would be something pulled out of chemical regimens. Or it's been.
Chemical treated.
Right now, what we're looking at, we didn't receive a notice. We'll be up here in the slide.
And for everybody that doesn't know, this gentleman, Ronnie.
Ronnie Hernandez.
That's him.
Thank you, appreciate it, sir.
For the questions, we're going to move to item number twelve. Discuss, approve, disapprove, offer for disposition in sum, or all of the P S. I'm sorry? We just have acknowledgement, no act, no action or anything like that. P S and S order of equipment, which was declared surplus at the end of twenty fourteen. Commissioner's court meeting, Arthur, and Judge, and for Karen.
The reason it's a little vague, just so you know, is because I have been getting calls throughout the week to say that people were going to send, or throughout last week, to say people were going to send me in some bids. And I wanted to make sure that I was able to get on the agenda and we can get their answers to them and everything right away. So I wanted you to know, I had received two bids for the equipment. If you'll recall, we declared surplus a few months back, or maybe it was just last month. But anyway, it was eighteen auto, what they're called, auto marks and eighteen M one hundreds, which is the old P S and S voting equipment that we were using. I have received bids from two different counties. One of the counties is interested in all eighteen of the M one hundreds, but only at five hundred dollars each, which would be right at nine thousand dollars for that total bid. Another county, though, is Clay, and that county said, you know, if they couldn't get them all, they would be interested in however many they could get. She understood that I'm trying to get rid of most of them as much together as I can. The thing about the auto marks is what they are, just so you know, they're just for the disabled. And so you actually would have to have an M one hundred in order to use an auto mark. But you don't have to have an auto mark to use an M one hundred. I mean, the M one hundred is the one that reads the ballot. And the auto mark is the one for the disabled, and it marks the ballot from them, as I understand it, and then it's still scanned through the M one hundred. So just for extra information. So Clay County has put in a bid for five of the M one hundreds at a thousand dollars each, which already is higher than what the other county, I forgot which county, Rockwell County, has offered. And just five of those and five of the auto marks at five hundred dollars each. Now, just, I know you're probably wondering, how much did we pay for them initially? We paid for the auto marks initially one thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents each, and this is back in two thousand and six. And for the P S and S, I'm sorry, the M one hundreds, we paid four thousand seven hundred fifty. But I, you know, I did put it out there, gotten just a few calls. I have gotten calls from one other city who would be interested in only one or two, they said, of the M one hundreds, no official bid put in, but for five hundred dollars each. So that's just one other offer we had. But with these two offers, we can get rid of all of our M one hundreds, and we would still have thirteen auto marks left. But I, you know, I'll continue to try to get rid of the rest of the auto marks. But anyway, so I just needed to present that to you and see if either of those bids were okay for me to approve or accept, I guess.
Clay County wants five for a thousand each of the M one hundred?
Correct, and five auto marks.
Five hundred.
Five hundred each. Their total bid was seven five hundred, yes.
Seven five hundred. So you're taking consideration of taking theirs and then giving the rest of, or selling the rest of the M one hundreds to Rockwell County?
Correct, for five hundred dollars.
Thirteen of those, sixty five hundred?
Yes, yes.
And then you would go over, you would have thirteen of the auto marks?
Yes, yes.
No other bids than auto marks except Clay County?
And no other one that even sounds even a little bit interested in us. You know, I just want to reiterate, I'm a little concerned about selling all of the M one hundreds and having just auto marks left. I don't know that I'll be able to sell the auto marks by themselves. But we didn't have any offers for the auto marks or the M one hundreds other than these two. So, you know, I would like to sell whatever I can. So I just, I don't know, I'm just thinking, and I want to make sure we have all the information. I think the auto marks are going to be hard to sell. But they're hard to sell either way. You okay with accepting both of these bids?
Accepting first Clay County because that's the higher one, and then the rest go to Rockwell County. Motion the lady to take all the bays out? Any opposed? And motion passed.
Thank you.
Moving to item number thirteen. Discuss, approve, disapprove, resolution to reapply the criminal justice division, C I, C J B, Matthew, your information.
I'd like to vote against it, but I stepped over.
All right.
This is great. And what this is, is a resolution that will go to the criminal justice division in an application to review a current grant that we have in mind. And we're going to review all, year number two, and it's our date of reference.
Made a second oral favor, say aye. All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving to item number fourteen. Discussion, consideration, action, submission of Senate Bill seventeen forty-seven seven. Application to Text Dot for Madam, Arthur Judge, Michelle, Bonnie Mitchell, David.
Thank you, sir. I've put together a complete application, should have a copy of it. I wanted to give you a copy of this email this morning and make sure that everybody understands exactly where we are in this process. And if you recall, when Text Dot considered extending the deadline for the application, someone at Austin testified at that meeting in support of them giving us an opportunity to submit our application earlier than the March seventh through fourteenth window. And they agreed to allow us to submit an informal application for their review. And they would take our application, review it, use it as a test pilot project to test their system, see how it meshed out. So what I've done, I've put a packet together, and you have a copy of everything that's submitted. This is the application that was actually submitted to Text Dot. We submitted that. Text Dot responded. If you'll notice in my submission, I made a point that this was not an actual application that was submitted for their consideration and review. So that was done. Text Dot responded back and said, "We have reviewed Corners County application packet. It is a complete application with all the required documents. The conclusion is that if this were, in quotation, a real application, we would recommend for approval." So I'm very happy and elated that we have crossed that bridge. We've been given an opportunity to have a test run. David and I have worked on this thing extensively, and you all know it. We've tried very hard to keep the court abreast of what we're doing. David's here this morning to go back over. What I would like to do, and we put it on the agenda so that the court can take whatever action they choose, I really don't think it's necessary this morning that the court make a motion and approve this application as submitted. You certainly can if you want to. But what I'm giving you this morning is an opportunity to review what we've submitted.